First of all, it is a magazine, a self magazine or a book, that they have to promote the careers and the technical education on at the K. For all our students, and it's a huge booklet, which I think is awesome. And we have some wonderful, wonderful classics at K. And I still say, I don't know why we talk about K all the time, but it is one of the best secrets I think you can pull off of. So we are trying to promote it much better, motivate them, and get our students involved. Now, I'm gonna say this, when you see these students that are working in these classes, they're in the path, they're really into it. We did have our, what'd you call it, our cosmetology students that went to Houston this weekend, and they were really excited about the trip going there. We had ten students that went to Houston, and they saw all the ladies and hair styles. So I thought you all would enjoy the book, but I think it's just a beautiful book. So I think the booklet is beautiful. Yes, and professionally done. Next, we have our Wilson Early College High School students. We have four students that are working in our elementary schools, and I think they're doing a magnificent job. I'm gonna ask Dr. Getwood to talk about the student that he saw who were on our calibration. He says it's so exciting. He talks about our students. He says it was exciting. So I'm gonna ask him to read enough about what he said.
Thank you very much, Dr. Porter. Good afternoon or good evening, Board President Ambrose and members of the board trustees. I heard Mr. Wibel and Dr. Porter talk about how impressive the students were from Woodrow Wilson, who had been taken to the high, taken to the elementary campuses to serve as tutors, as tutors or substitute teachers. And during the calibration period, I had the privilege of going into a class where two of the students were working with our elementary students. And as one young lady was actually engaged, you would have thought she was a teacher. She was working with three students, and it was mathematics. And it's obvious that she had a strong mathematical background because she questioned the students like a teacher. And she was completely effective in working with those three students that are engaged, talking to her, making directions, reteaching, all the things we think a certified teacher should do. I was simply fascinated, just fascinated with the way those students were working. And I have to give kudos to Ms. Baptiste for her ingenuity in this particular endeavor as well. And of course, Dr. Owens is working with that, with Ms. Wibel. It's just been a great, it was a great opportunity. And if you would have the opportunity to see what I saw, you would walk away equally as depressed. Thank you.
So we're really, really happy. And the best thing about that, they're our students and being with us. And if you can't invest in your own, you sure shouldn't be excited about investing in someone else coming in. So they're ours, and we are proud, and we thank the parents for working with our kids and raising some of the most lovable, smart, and beautiful kids in the Port Arthur district.
Oh, Dr. Porter, and she plays on the girls' sports league festival.
We also, the news was out today, and we have, we're asking you to approve buzzers for our schools. And this, these buzzers will go on the main entrance of each facility. And before anyone even enters, the best of you, they'll be able to, our insight, monitors will be able to see who's at the front door, talking, find out why they're there. Then you let them in, they'll go through the metal detectors, even before they're allowed to come into the main building. So we're excited, excited about that as well. Also, a couple of weeks ago, you may have seen that there were three students, were three or four students that I thought were just magnificent. We had one that had recently graduated with his medical, medical doctor degree. We had another that was playing on the slide with John Baptiste. He was conducting. And we had another that was talking, he was MBA, and talking about being interviewed by the MBA. He was sitting there. And then we also have our twenty-six that are with us, and they are beautiful. So in talking with Miss Amber, so of course, you know, it's incredible. This Adrian Block told her about that, said, "We need to do something." And we got numbers and phone numbers, and we asked this lot to just, how about we just be at this lot?
We conducted Zoom interviews with the alumni. We conducted Zoom interviews with the alumni, and we put together a snippet, a portion of those four interviews. But we are also going to edit individual interviews so that they can be seen in their entirety on our YouTube channel and on our social media platforms. So this is the video. And they were flexible. They did this pretty much because PISD asked, and they are so proud to be from PISD that they were accommodating the young man in New York City. He did his Zoom before he was going to rehearsals at Carnegie Hall last, I think it was Thursday. And then the young man that's in medical school, he did his on Sunday. And Junior had been traveling all last week, but he also did Maytime on Sunday. And then the young man from Wilson, I went over to the campus to interview him. So this is the final product of those interviews.
My main job is in case something happens in the main room, the conductor, I have to just go ahead and step in. I have to just go ahead and step in. I started this when I actually, I was about in year twelve, so probably about the seventh or eighth grade. So I was in PISD from second grade up to eighth grade. And actually, one of my first teachers was Derry Spears, who is a family member of Memorial. Because of him, like, I learned a lot and stuff like earlier, early on, you know, that's my good bro. So really, just like all of my teachers were just very supportive of that. They kind of knew I was a little different, and so like, they kind of embraced me from that. So elementary, we let the whole go, you know, then middle school was Woodrow, but we were on the same campus. I went to undergraduate period when I was a piano major there. Then I came to New York about four years ago to do my masters in conducting. After having my masters, I came down to Manhattan, which is in Harlem. There, I just finished my certificate also in conducting. And I started my doctorate in September. John Baptiste, he just resigned from the late show, but he was on the cover show for about seven years. And now, he just won like five degrees, and he got now a bit like fourteen. So like, now he's just doing different things. He won an Oscar, but he sold. And people, some people don't know, like, well, it's actually a plan to get him, but it's digitized. He premiered a piece at Carnegie Hall back in April. And the day of that concert, I had actually a conducting recital, so I didn't think I'd be able to make the concert. So the same people who worked in that orchestra did the commercial a year ago. So me being proactive and ambitious, I'm like, let me see if I can get into rehearsals and just to see what's going on. So I, you know, I got to rehearsals. Again, I didn't know that John would be there. So he comes in, breaks in, and he's like, "That's great to meet you." And we'll talk, and he'll take pictures. And I'm like, "Well, you know, I should go say hi." And so I was like, "Man, I don't know if you remember me, but I did your commercial last year." And I gave you that. He was like, "Glenn, man, yes, I remember you." I'm like, "Oh," I think he was there. And the conversation was, "Yo, what are you doing?" And I made a statement. I was like, "Nothing." He was like, "You're gonna conduct my American cinema." All right. And the next week, we actually rehearsed for it, and like, that just kind of happened. Being the owner, I didn't stop it up, but it didn't happen so fast. So just being able to work alongside him, like, that was very incredible. He's one of the most brilliant musicians I've ever just been in this stuff. And like, embarrassing, but in a lot of ways, which is like crazy. If it's your passion, go for it. People thought I was going into medicine, like, my problem. I thought I was going to get into medicine too, until I kind of made the decision, like, you know, use it to what I needed. And it was kind of hard for my parents to accept it at first, but like, when they asked me, "So, okay, but..." I see it now, but it kind of makes sense. So like, I obviously, I've been like the child to kind of make the rational decisions, but it's always like imperative to the math. It's like, everything is like calculated. So definitely, you know, if it's your passion, go for it. You know, reach out to people who are doing things that you want to do. Like, that's what I had to do, you know what I'm saying? Like, you have to be proactive. You must be ambitious. Like, things are just not gonna happen. Like, you may have to go and reach them out. So just be ambitious, and if you want it, go for it.
We're able to become a tutor. There are sixty grand hours that we've got with our state college for our third group as well. And so far, it's just working, starting out with working with small groups of kids. Basically, our ELSL program and things like that, helping them with reading so far, and all the basic core skills, and then branching out hopefully after our shadow period to pick up tutors once the teachers leave out, and then also in the future, possibly, for each candidate for PISD. I worked at the Queen Elementary with Ms. Principal Dr. Jerry Austin. And once I got there, she greeted me, and I looked at the elementary board. So she instantly recognized me, and I was familiar with some of the older staff. As I got introduced with them, they told me I was assigned in my bunch card, and then I got followed to the classroom. I was working with ESL teacher with our reading courses. And basically, they just brought this student for me to work with individually a lot, and went over those core skills, and then just got more introduced to the campus. And so far, what I do would be every time I arrive. So good for our schedule on certain days, specifically for me, it'll be Monday, Tuesday, and Thursdays. I have American literature, which I'm taking with our college course, and I also have the ancient readers class, American history. But they work on our schedules, so that'd be most of our extracurriculars and things like that. So I'll be working significantly every day, but it'll be kind of shifted throughout. And then of course, those days that I am available to work the whole day, I'm really willing to.
Jeffrey Bayeau Jr., went to PISD for, up until ninth grade, went to Queen, went to Lee, went to Woodrow Wilson. And lastly, a part of ninth grade campus. I think the biggest thing, when I reflect on PISD, is really the support that I had just coming up from, you know, elementary and middle school. So many great teachers, Ms. Wilson, I remember my fifth grade teacher, Ms. Taylor, who's a principal now, Coach Brad, Coach Robinson, just all of these people really pushed me, so am I. Really just believing in me, supporting me, telling me that it's possible. Being there every step of the way, middle school, you know, pushing me and letting me know how much potential that I had. And so sometimes I think about those things, all the people who supported me and believed in me, along with my family as well, and that carries me along. And as I go through these obstacles, that it's definitely possible. I've already built that self-esteem in myself, you know, having that support from the school district. And really just Porter, you know, really been very supportive from, you know, my family, my mom, and everyone really coming together and supporting. I think that's the strongest thing at the school, really provide for just the relief as possible. After graduating in 2010, I went to Memorial for other, and I received an associate's degree. I then left to University of Houston, and I majored in biology with a minor in nutrition. I graduated in 2017, then opened in a research, MD Anderson, by market discovery. And I'm involved in translational research. I'm at E.T. McCover right now, working on my medical degree with a concentration in electrical translational science. And what that is, is we identify things in a problem that's rare, that nobody really knows about. We take that problem from the clinic, investigate it in a research lab, and say, "What are the base, what's the basis of this? What's driving this problem?" We find a solution and then bring it back to the clinic to support the patient. The white coat identifies for a medical professional. So as a physician, in training, a medical student, you get your first white coat, or your second year is a white coat ceremony, and it's a short white coat. And you take your oath, the Hippocratic oath, and it involves, you pledge integrity, you pledge an absolute honor, you pledge to work as hard as you can, and basically acknowledging that you are serving of a community. You want to go into medicine to be prestigious, but it's really a service initiative, a service of you. And so you take that oath, and you get the short code. Upon graduation, you come in and be, you get your credential, and then you yell over the code. And that signifies you are a physician. Even if you do graduate, right, and you say, "Well, I think graduate part needs to be..." It's okay, because one thing about being in high school and coming out of high school, doing the best you can, making straight A's, that's, that's fine. It's okay. Because it makes the next step just a little bit shorter. But maybe you don't get those straight A's. Maybe you ain't beat, maybe you were a C student. Maybe you were behind a pack. That's fine. It just makes your next step a little bit bigger. That's all it is. It doesn't close any doors for you. It just makes that next step bigger. So wherever you are in school, you might leave a senior or a sophomore. You might, you know, be a couple of days, you graduated or whatever, and feel like, "I did not do enough in school." It's okay. There's other avenues. Maybe you take a community college, or maybe you take some time off to reevaluate what you need to do, and then prepare yourself mentally, spiritually, to get ready to go back into school. And maybe you are that person who, top of the class, that's great. Continue to challenge yourself, continue to push yourself, continue to stay focused and stay of course, because you want to keep your momentum, you want to make the next step shorter, the next step shorter. And it just makes it a little bit easier on yourself. But no matter wherever you are on the spectrum, if you keep going, have faith, it's definitely doable.
Well, I'm here for other, tell a reason why I don't like, you know, staying focused in school, or looking forward, you know, having access to, you know, pretty much anything that Porter, you just help me out a lot. It does just very thankful and grateful to God.
So I went to Capital Elementary, went to Thomas Jefferson Middle School, and then ended up at Memorial High School. And, you know, they had my whole career education in Porter, and it was just great. I went to Louisiana Tech, I went through Louisiana, about three hours away from Porter. And they helped me a lot throughout my high school career to prepare me to get to where I was in college.
Did you have any classes in college that you feel some of your high school classes were similar, so it made it easier for you to take the class in college because you prepared because of the lesson you had at high school?
Uh, yes. I studied some English classes, math classes, you know, that kind of pretty much the same. My teachers, it was just translated over to college, and it was kind of similar, you know, St. Thomas High to college. It was, it was very much easy. I'll probably mention it most of my times in my interviews, that I'm from Port Arthur, Texas, and you know, just Fall Town, and, you know, growing up there, and going to my college, Louisiana Tech. And you know, right now, it's just, you know, blessing, and, you know, you stay focused and things like that. You just get a great outcome. You just gotta stay focused on where your name goes, which one you're relying. You know, also, in education, you gotta stay focused in that, and, you know, see where your career lands at, and, you know, just always stay positive, and, you know, keep your head straight, and everything falling first. As you get older, you know, you gotta really be mainly focused because in the real world, you get boy chess, and everything is not progress, and you just gotta stay focused and stay on top of your stuff.
Thank you very much for the video, and ladies and gentlemen, board members. That is the reason why we do what we do for students such as these. All of them are good, and the video is a little lengthy, but you know what? We put a whole lot of time in students that don't always make the right choice, and we put a lot of time in editing them. So we have an opportunity to highlight and to give the accolades to our students who made right choices. And it has not always been easy for them, but as you heard, they stayed the course. And thank God, they remember where they're from. Not just PISD, but they are our community-based kids. That concludes our report of for that board. And next, on the spectrum, we have, in the absence of Dr. Paula Albiga, we have Mrs. Naomi Milton, and Mr. Celis is here as well. I'm gonna ask Mrs. Milton to come forward, and she's going to give this play to, twenty, twenty, yeah, it is gonna be twenty-two, bilingual ESL annual program evaluation. You do have a folder in front of you, as she's placed the red folder with information.
Good evening. Good evening to the board, good evening, Dr. Porter, and the executive members of the team today. I'm going to just share with you our annual bilingual ESL report, our evaluation report with the board. You do have the presentation in front of you as well. I'm gonna do my very best to keep it short and sweet without compromising the message and the information that add further requirement. Let me get organized, apologize. And I know you all are going to look forward, I think we'll have it in front of you as well. You have here are the members of the multilingual bilingual department. I'm not gonna read it, but they are available for you to view. In our introduction, I do want to start very briefly before I go into the department's mission and goals, just kind of with a brief overview of what we will be discussing, or what I will be discussing today, this evening, with regard to, we're looking specifically at our population of emergent bilingual students and the programs that are designed to serve their needs. And so just briefly, I do want to mention that these, this group of students have been called many different things over the course of time. They've been English language learners, they've been English learners, they've been limited language proficient. But moving forward, the terminology that people use to discuss these students is considered now emergent bilingual. It replaces the terms they consider these students as literate to a much more comprehensive understanding, and that it's an asset-based term, emergent bilingual. These students are learning as an additional target language of English, and so there is no way to define them as limited. And so this change is effective in the Texas Education Code as of September first, 2021. So from this point forward in the presentation, they will be referred to as emergent bilingual. Where they're referred to as English learners, it's still a federal term, so they're sometimes interchangeable. But for the most part, in our program evaluation, you'll see them as emergent bilingual. To define an emergent bilingual student is one who is continuing to learn their native, or what is considered their home language, while learning a new language. Now, in Texas public schools, that language is English. That's our target language. And so to highlight our department, on behalf of the district, our mission is that Port Arthur ISD is dedicated to providing our students, our emergent bilingual students and their families with every opportunity to be academically successful. And we serve our students in this way through our bilingual ESL programs. The district's bilingual ESL programs are designed to provide consistent and high-quality education that is culturally responsive and linguistically diverse for this group of students that we serve. The table of contents that you now have in front of you lists the requirements with regard to our program evaluation. It involves a flat emergent bilingual, that's the student overview. It's our program overview, our ESL program overview, which not only includes the number of students served, but it also includes all of our program sites. It also will, we will highlight briefly the program services provided by the department, learning and assessment materials, as it's coupled with academic achievement and language proficiency that we have been pouring on annually, our bilingual exceptions and ESL waivers in two parts, what was, which was last this last year, and what is, what is coming up for 2022, 2023, our major expenditures of Title III Part VIII funds, and we share that through the compliance reports. And then lastly, the parental engagement, family and community outreach activities, as they are documented with, and it ends with some conclusions based on all of our review of the data points to prepare this evaluation report. So again, starting with our emergent bilinguals, I'm gonna start kind of with a much broader focus to bring it down to Port Arthur. So if you look at the map in front of you, the map of Texas, the distribution of EB students across the state, we fall in Region Five. So Region Five is normally ten to nineteen percent of students that make up the total emergent bilingual population across the state of Texas. So with those, identifying emergent bilingual students, twenty percent of the students in Texas are emergent bilingual. Again, it says ELB, again, those terms are sometimes interchangeable. But by and large, one in five students in Texas is an emergent bilingual student, served in a bilingual and/or ESL program. Now, let's narrow our lens to Port Arthur ISD, looking at our student demographics. This information, of course, is in what it was reported to the state. And we can see briefly, I'm not gonna go over it in much detail, but ethnic distribution. We're looking at our Hispanic students at about forty-eight point nine percent, and then it kind of goes from there. So if you look at your emergent bilingual student distribution, just briefly remember, Region Five has ten to nineteen percent, and Port Arthur, as of last year, has twenty-seven point seven percent emergent bilingual students. So we exceed even really kind of what the percentage is for the region in our district. And so we're just kind of highlighting the number of emergent bilingual students that Port Arthur serves every single day through the bilingual ESL programs. Moving forward, this is pulled from the clean snapshot as of last year. These are the home countries where students are hailing from. And so you can see, there are quite a few. In addition to the homeland, home countries, they also have our major languages represented. The majority, you can see, ninety-six percent of the languages that in Port Arthur is Spanish. That's a huge percentage. We have two point four percent Vietnamese, even much smaller, zero point nine percent Arabic, and then much smaller than that, zero point four percent Mandarin. And so looking at the languages, this kind of informs when you have, this Spanish being ninety percent of the languages that we're seeing, this is why the district is required to offer Spanish bilingual programs. And so we're gonna move forward in just a second and look at, for instance, the emergent bilingual students served by program District Y. And so very, very briefly, we have, we're a district required to offer bilingual education in Spanish, because that's the language classification, where we have the number of students. And they are served, and we'll talk about the campuses, there's, we have five designated campuses, three major elementary campuses, that's Terrill Elementary, Lakeview Elementary, and St. Houston Elementary, but also Washington Elementary and Leely. And so those serve, they have bilingual programs. All of our other elementary programs, they offer ESL, but even our bilingual designated campuses offer ESL as well. And so this just is a breakdown of the students, as past last year, how they're served. If you notice, there's quite a significant change. If you notice, there's quite a significant change from bilingual to ESL on this chart. And the reason for that is we are a district required to offer bilingual, but bilingual does not stop after fifth grade. So from middle, all of middle school to high school is ESL. And so that's why there's a significant, uh, increase of students, if you can see, that are serving ESL. Again, the next couple of pages that you will see, uh, in your report are basically EL demographics, elementary. Now, if we look at the blue, the blue is your non-EB and your red is your EB student population. If you look at San Houston, San Houston is kind of on par with both. Uh, if you look at Lakeview, their emergent bilingual population far exceeds their regular pop, you know, their regular popular, non-emergent bilingual population. Terrell is another one of our big bilingual campuses. And again, they do have more non-EB students, but they still have a significant, significant number, um, of bilingual students. So I just wanted to share that information with you. Secondary as well, Memorial, of course, we cluster, um, Memorial ninth grade, Memorial High School and Wilson altogether. But that is also just a demographic breakdown, um, of those, of that student population there. So Port Arthur ISD does serve a diverse population even within the emergent bilingual group of students. So last year, we served a total of two thousand two hundred and fifteen emergent bilingual students in bilingual or ESL programs. And we monitored another three hundred and sixty-nine, um, students for that same, for the, for the 2021, 22 school year. And so when we talk about students that are being monitored, because the evaluation does ask us to look at uh, the students that have been exited. And what that means is that they have met all of the criteria and they met English proficiency, so they no longer need program services. So we wanted to look at the breakdown of how many we have in each one of these monitored years. And so first and second year, that's a state requirement, third and fourth year, that's a federal requirement. So I wanted to make sure that you had that information available. And then we also wanted to take a look and share with you the number of students served in other programs. So emergent bilingual students, uh, are, have access to other special programs. And so this just breaks down career technical education, which is a big one for emergent bilingual students. Gifted and talented dual enrollment, special education by all four as compared to the total two thousand two hundred and fifteen. Okay, so that brings us, I know that's kind of rapid, but that brings us to the next component, which is our bilingual ESL program overview. And so we just, again, this has everything to do with the programs we're required. Again, Port Arthur is aligned with the, um, Texas, you know, administrative code, chapter eighty-nine, and the commissioner rule, chapter eighty-nine, to ensure that we're not only providing programs, but we're also making sure that, um, we are, we are in align with chapter eighty-nine. And so the next few slides that you will see are just basically a breakdown of the different, um, program sites across the district for your review. And of course, I just wanted to mention that Port Arthur ISD is a transitional bilingual early exit district. And so that is the program. And the next one here, you'll see kind of a model breakdown. I'm not going to review it in any great depth, but I do want you to, you can review the, uh, general description, certification requirements, of course, the goal and the instructional approach. And again, just gives you a breakdown, um, of the language use in each, and figure out every grade level as well. The second piece here is our ESL program sites. Again, that is, uh, we have pre-K through fifth grade, even if it's a bilingual designated campus. It's, they still offer ESL, and so these are just the sites, um, that offer that. The, the content base, it's sometimes they'll have a content-based program, which I'll share with you in just a second for our pull-out program. And then, of course, at our secondary campuses, as of this year, all of our secondary campuses are, offer the ESL pull-out, which those students are served through ELAR. And this is, this in front of you now is the instructional model of ESL content, content-based program. And the next piece here is the instructional model for the ESL pull-out program for your review. Okay, now the next section that I would like to review is the bilingual ESL support services, Title III Part A, and it also is in line with the Texas Administrative Code, chapter eighty-nine, and the, um, so then chapter twenty-nine as well. And so, of course, the multilingual department strives to provide assistance and best practices and professional development to ensure success for the emergent bilingual students served. Uh, some of the services that we will continue to provide and that were provided include, uh, addressing instructional needs of emergent bilingual, again, EL students. Uh, the ALPS, the English Language Proficiency Standards, bilingual ESL PIM coding, and that's how funding is generated, uh, parental involvement, state and federal compliance with regard to our LPAC committees, which I'll share, that's in board policy. State testing specifically, uh, with TELPASS, which is the assess, the state assessment to gain language proficiency, but not limited to also STAR prep, whether it's providing after-school support, tutors, et cetera, accountability requirements, certification preparation, and then, of course, application and a compliance reporting with regard to, uh, requirements for ESDA. Okay, moving forward, I just wanted to share briefly with you a snippet of the board policy with regard to, um, let, our special programs bilingual ESL, the LPAC, um, and that the district shall provide, not only orientation, but also training for all members of the LPAC, which we are in compliance with. Uh, and these here are the list of activities that the department, um, had last year to ensure that they were, that they remain compliant. The next couple of slides are basically, again, I will say for your review, but they are. It's, uh, the LPAC committee, that's the Language Proficiency Assessment Committee, is responsible for identification and classification. And so this just specifies in great detail what they are responsible for. And it just to further show that Port Arthur is in compliance with that requirement, state requirements. And this is, again, is just a kind of a visual of the process of identification. And then, of course, they are also, the committee is also responsible for reclassification of students. Once they reach proficiency, there are certain guidelines that the LPAC committee must, uh, take into consideration. But this is something else we'd like, just, just for your review, to kind of see how comprehensive it is in terms of what the LPAC does and to ensure that students are served appropriately. Okay, moving forward, assessment materials, as in learning materials. Uh, we have, again, two parts. The academic achievement, which of course is measured by STAR, and then language proficiency, which is measured by TELPASS. Both of those are state assessments. And so I wanted to just briefly share with you, uh, some information about that. For state, neither state required, um, and we are, Port Arthur is in complete compliance with regard to using that. For identification and progress measurement, we use, uh, monitoring parting. We use pre-lost and lost links. Uh, for academic readiness, language proficiency and reclassification, we use STAR for, in English and Spanish, um, TELPASS and then the Iowa assessments as well. And so that is, wanted to share with you the state required assessment materials that we, that Port Arthur is using. Now, just very briefly, what's here is the preliminary, uh, 2022, uh, result, the RDA, the results for an accountability. Uh, of course, at the time of putting this report together, we don't have the final. And so I'm not going to review it with you in much depth, but I did want to share that once the final report is issued, we will update the report, we will update this, our report to reflect. Uh, but we did want to include the preliminary because that's what we had at this time. And so the, the, the RDA basically goes through, uh, STAR for bilingual, STAR passing rates for ESL, and it moves through, um, the alternative language play, which we'll cover very briefly here in a minute. Those that are not served, emergent bilingual, those, uh, students that have denied the program. Uh, EB dyslexia STAR rate, and then it goes through, uh, those who have been reclassified, uh, then how they perform, uh, after they reclassify. And then the next are EOC, that's at the secondary level. And then this goes through TELPASS as well. Again, it's preliminary, so I don't want to spend too much time, uh, until we have a formal, but I definitely want you to know that we're aware and waiting for the final to, uh, to come out. Uh, moving forward. The annual review is also one of the things that we wanted to look at was our TELPASS scores. And so, um, there's a lot on the screen here, but I think overall, the finding that we see is that this is one area that we know we need to do better. Um, we know it's an area that we need to see growth. And so as we develop our, um, department's plan, this is one area that we will continue to, uh, build capacity, not just with our teachers, but also with our students. And so what you see here is rating, TELPASS rating by progress, of course, either students, we have to look at five-year span, uh, we look at students that show very little progress, showed only one, uh, level and then progressing more than one. And so, again, we do know this is an area that we will be spending a lot of time focusing on with all of our campuses to ensure that we get greater gains at the end of the school year. And then the second piece is the TELPASS overall composite score, uh, by years in US schools. And the beginning, intermediate, advanced and advanced high, those are the language proficiency, um, categories. And of course, we want to see students move from beginning, uh, to advanced highs. So that's our target. Okay, moving on, uh, very briefly to the bilingual exceptions and ESL waivers. Again, the report, the report in front of you has both what was, so this is what was last year, and it also includes what is, so what is going on this year. I had the opportunity and privilege to meet with Dr. Quartering, uh, Friday last week, and we were able to go over this, uh, in great detail. So I'm not going to go over again in great detail with everybody, but just know that the superintendent has, um, reviewed all the information and have provided the assurances that the district will take necessary action to ensure that we get where we need, bilingual certified teachers, that necessary action will be taken on behalf of the district. And so we will work collaboratively in the process to ensure that all of our students and all of our campuses are staffed accordingly, to ensure that our students get the services they need. And so I'm going to kind of move through this, but this just goes through certification requirements. This is from, you know, for the TVA. And now we can look at bilingual and ESL, if you were ever curious, uh, what those requirements are. Uh, and then in the event that you don't have a sufficient number of teachers or your numbers exceed twenty-two, uh, those are, these are one of the things we have to do. So just note that as of tomorrow, that document, the application will be submitted to the TVA. And so, um, we, I think we're going to, we have a good plan in place moving forward. So again, this is for, for you, 2021, 2022, previous years. In addition to the summary of how many we applied for and how many are now certified, we're also going to share with you last year's staffing and professional development plan. So, um, last year, we had thirty-three certified ESL teachers teaching in the field and we had twenty-nine bilingual teachers. We provided professional staff development, uh, and it, again, I'm just going to go through, but you can see, we wanted you to have access and see all of the professional development that was provided. A lot of it was one-on-one with campuses, um, that was provided throughout the year to support bilingual ESL programs. So it's quite a few. And then what brings us to, and next, so this is the 2022, 2023 current year. And this is the information that was shared in depth with Dr. Quartering. So I'm not going to, again, for sake of time, I'm not going to share it all. But I do want to share one thing with you all. We have to come up with when you submit a waiver, it's part of the process. You have to submit an action plan for recruiting activities and a comprehensive professional development plan. The plan is, it's a local document, of course, if you ever have, uh, you know, do they have a TAAS or a PATA available? But the biggest piece for us is, of course, how will we support, um, the district? And, and let me just say that we understand that there is, there's a teacher shortage problem. That's national, it affects our state, but it also, more personally, it affects our district. And so it's kind of, we also have another issue with not only we're having a hard time finding teachers, we're having a much more difficult time finding bilingual certified teachers. And so as a district required to offer bilingual, we have to, and I say we, um, as, as a department, as a district, have to look at ways to increase our capacity, work with what we have and be innovative in ways that we bring and invite teachers to come into our district to work with our youth and children. And so this, uh, this plan, basically the recruiting activities, I worked with Mr. Bible's office and got a list of all of the recruiting activities that are, uh, either have happened or are coming up for the current year. Um, but also I want to just briefly share that we will continue to provide support in terms of exam preparation materials, tutorials, personal going to campuses. I know I work with Wilson, go, go to the campus, work with the teacher who is seeking certification. Um, continue to work in every capacity, in every way that we have at our, at our fingertips. Even if we have to look outside for it, that's fine, but just build capacity in who we have already and continue to help, uh, in efforts to bring our teachers to Port Arthur. And we will continue to strengthen the programs that we do have, especially those that are under the waiver of bilingual exception by providing, uh, support to the campuses. We have a, uh, we truly have bilingual ESL LPAC coordinators, uh, LPAC chairs at every campus in the district. And they not only provide a lot of compliance support because, because we're special programs, not only do we have federal requirements, we have state requirements. And so when you're a highly regulated program, you have to have lots of compliance talks. And so we have, um, a really good system of providing compliance support. We have, uh, good solid bilingual teachers, in most cases, they're bilingual teachers at our elementary, that are the, the coordinators at the campus, so they provide support for new teachers. They provide support when there's a sub in the class. And so it's really a beautiful thing to see how we are doing our very best to work together as a team to ensure that our children don't suffer at any point. And so I just wanted to just share that piece with you. And then, of course, there's just two other things I would like to share. Major expenditures of Title III funds included here are just, of course, of allowable use of those funds. And then the next piece is our compliance report that was submitted earlier. Um, I don't remember, it was this month or in last month, but I know that it was very recent. And that is just a breakdown of all of the funds, um, that were spent in supplemental language instruction programs. Again, Title III supplemental camps, the plant, um, and then, uh, parent, family, community engagement, and also supplemental professional development activities. And then, of course, so you know that we report to this, to the federal government uh, with regard, do we offer a newcomer program? Do we offer a English language program? What model did we offer? Did we offer a bilingual program? Like I said, we're a district required, we don't have an option. So we're a district required for both bilingual and ESL. And so I just, I wanted to share with you that we are working hard to ensure complete compliance. Because I believe one hundred percent is possible. And so the last piece, and I'm just going to ask Mr. Celis to share very, very briefly. I felt like an imposter sharing this because it's not, um, if he would just, uh, share your parental engagement, family, community engagement. Let me say before I turn the mic over, I appreciate your time and attention.
Thank you very much, Ms. Norton. Good evening, everyone. Um, as department, we are following the guidelines of the Title III Part A, um, guidelines. And, um, we have a specific part for parental involvement, which is, um, separated from the Title I that, um, Dr. Gettman does in his department. And this is to, to meet the specific needs of our population, of our students and parents. And, um, one of the things that we are required to address is to work with parents as individuals, with the families and with the community. So we offer several opportunities for them. We focus on educating parents in our school system, which is way different from other countries where they come from. We train them, uh, in the use of the resources that we have allowed as a district for them to, to help their kids and for themselves to improve and learn things. We inform them all about every activity that is, uh, going on in the schools, every important information that we need to share, we will inform, inform to the parents. And, uh, we also promote, promote diversity and we promote the, um, cultural awareness. So what you're seeing is just a list of all the activities that we had during the year. So what you're seeing is just a list of all the activities that we had during the year. Our goal is to have at least one per month, but you can see that we exceeded that. We had two or three during several months. And all of this is available for the parents to, to watch. We did many things, we did online, the virtual. And last year, we worked on updating our webpage. So all those activities are available also on our webpage for them to review after parts, and they're on, on time. And in addition to that, we offer English classes for the parents. We had four classes last year with different times, so we can accommodate for their needs. Whenever they, they can attend, they had several options. And we offer it during the whole school year. We also offer additional services. We help parents with registration, translate transcripts, assist parents with all the smooth needs. They, they come to us for every question, every issue that they have had at school. They come to us and request help. And we also offer translation and interpretation during all their department's meetings. And we share information via social media. And we have some how-to videos in Spanish for them to follow, like registration and all that. And I usually communicate with parents via social media. This is a big thing now that we use Facebook and Instagram and all that. They feel comfortable sending messages and asking questions. So this, this is just to show you some of the videos that we have. One of the most popular that I had this year, it was a orientation for the registration. I did a step-by-step video in Spanish for them to, to follow. And that's it for the parental involvement. The conclusion, the conclusion is here for you to review. So I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Well, definitely, we would like to thank Mrs. Lozen and Mrs. Sellers for taking all of this on. And the, Dr. Alba has been out through the F M L A, but they have done a marvelous job to keep the programs going, moving. So thank, thanks to both of you for your work and your presentations, absolutely beautiful. So, so thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it, thank you. Minute, consider and inappropriate improvements of the September 20th, 2022 regular board meeting, get out of motion.
Someone.
Second, within second, I mean, except the minute for the September 20th, 22 regular board meeting. Consignage, the following items, which are of a routine and or recurrent nature, have been designated consignaged, items by the board president, per policy being local. All of the items in the consignage that will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee, in which event the item or items will be withdrawn immediately for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the items not requiring separate discussion have been acted upon. Trustees, if you'll take a few minutes to review agenda items from one through 12. And I'll ask for a motion once that's done. Items one through 12. I have number eight. Okay. Any other trustees? If there are no others, then I will ask for a motion for items number one through seven and nine through 12. Second. We will approve items one through seven and items nine through 12. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those items are approved. Consignage to item number eight, considering it appropriate, approve the purchase of door buzzer entry system from Invoca Security, the now 79,500 for 12 campuses. Trustee Gilleri.
So Regina, would you explain to us what we intend to do with the buzzer system for the industry?
Okay. Trustee Gilleri, we're excited to even ask the board to approve the buzzers that we are asking to purchase. We have buzzers on doors that are inside of the building, but what we're asking is that buzzers be placed on the main entrance on the outside, the outside door. This will allow the monitor to talk to the person that's trying to enter the building before they enter. So we understand what they're doing there, what is the business, and start the process. Once we give them the clear to walk in to, most of us, our campuses have the best of deals, you know, the sector, then they're able to sign in. And then they're given either a district badge, which we have, you can use your badge to get in, or you will use your driver's license. And once you put the driver's license, and then we can see what, if there's a warrant for arrest and so forth. And then we give them a pass to move forward. So it's a process, but we do feel that the buzzers will help us to ensure the safety of our staff and our students. We understand that every time a parent drops off a student to us or a spouse or parent allows their adult to come and work for us, they want them to walk home along the same way they came to us. So that is what we're doing every day. There is something that we think about that will help save people at our schools. All be perfect? Absolutely not. Will we ever be perfect? Absolutely not. But each day, we want to get better and strengthen, strengthen our security system on e- in every facility.
Trustees, any other questions, concerns regarding the item number eight? If there are none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the item number eight. Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Agenda item number eight is approved. Personnel, Dr. Quarterby.
I have given board members a copy of the teachers' approval.
Is there a motion?
Sure.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The approval of the employment of teachers is accepted. Dr. Quarterby.
We are asking that you approve the employment of supervisor of student support services, and the choice for that would be Dr. Danita Jones.
Is there a motion?
Someone.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The employment of supervisor of student support services is approved. Information, Dr. Quarterby.
Average daily enrollment, 8,040. Average daily attendance, 94.52%.
I have a question. Last year this time, what was our average daily enrollment?
Uh, I think it was 7900, I'm sorry, 7900, and this year we're at 8,000. Our enrollment, 7,950, I think, 50. And this year, we're about almost 8200. At this time last year, we have about 230, absolutely increase, but still we're there.
Trustees, any other questions, concerns? If there are no questions or concerns, I'll call for a motion for adjournment.
Someone.
Second.
Thank you.
We are adjourned, have we need to think about?